People coming from out of town.
Sounds like out of town.
That's usually how it happens. People are bringing their work.
I don't want you to gasp.
You're in a party and somebody had an argument.
Exactly.
They were partying.
I don't know.
It's like somebody outside. And he got hit in the back. It was a, it was just like that. What do you call it? It's crazy.
I gotta shout you out. You're gonna have to.
But then, then I've been, I've seen the bar on the bouncer. I actually did. I don't like.
He's like, you don't remember that. Are you outside? I got shot.
I don't know.
I'm like, I'll like. Everybody knows this person. We all know this.
Well, yeah, if you don't know the name. Yeah.
Make the call to order the council meeting and committee session of Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And I will start with an announcement that is new for the meetings. The meetings of Mechanicsburg Borough Council are being recorded and livestreamed for the purposes of transparency and increased public access. The livestream, along with the recordings of previously held meetings, can be accessed from the borough's YouTube channel. The YouTube link is available on the agenda that is published online. And you will now have the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
President Miller.
Here.
Vice President Anthony.
There.
Councilwoman Agarson.
Here.
Attorney General President.
Here.
Councilman Yurie.
Here.
Councilman Martin.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Lieutenant Cassidy.
Present.
Steve Meyer.
Here.
Steve Smith.
Here.
E N C Ward.
Here.
B D C Arnold.
Here.
Public Works Director Layer. Superintendent Hume.
Here.
Manager Tom.
Here.
Reunited.
Thank you. We will start with the presentation of Resolution eleven, two thousand and twenty-three to Rebecca Yerick. So I'd like to have Councilman Yurie follow me down to the well and have his ear.
We'll fix that in post.
Yeah.
We have the filter.
Oh, you got the media.
So I want to begin my sentence tonight as not a farewell, but more of a transition to something that has got any difference of effort or, you know, ability or that we really look forward to your continued enthusiasm and support and the borough in your next role. And we are so excited and what that's going to be because you have brought so much to the Mechanicsburg downtown and your contributions as well have been immeasurable over the time that you have been involved in the city the entire time that I've been here. So I am very appreciative of everything that you have done for the Mechanicsburg community. And I look forward to what you're continuing to do to the Council. Councilman Yurie, do you have any comments? It was a new, maybe.
I, I think there are a few people that have. We've been glad. So many.
With that, the Borough Council has Resolution eleven, two thousand and twenty-three that states, whereas the citizenry and the officials of the Borough and the Mechanicsburg Council and Pennsylvania voluntarily request to elect a citizen resident to the Department of Law and Order on her retirement and her position as the downtown program associate manager with Cumberland Crime Housing and redevelopment authorities. And whereas she served as the Borough's Community and Business Development Manager, dedicated men use the economic development, beautification, and enhancement of the borough's downtown development. And whereas she has managed Cumberland County redevelopment authorities downtown services and administered the Mechanicsburg Borough State's loan program, the authority speaks to, speaks to five programs and shop getting business deals around these programs. And whereas she has brought a number of thriving businesses to the boroughs downtown or to the outskirts of Cumberland. Whereas Rebecca Yerick represents the borough with dedication and integrity, always practicing the best interest of the citizens of the borough and the city. And now therefore, it is all part of the Borough Council and the municipal authority that is in the neighborhood and the authority to say this procedure, this was significant for the discussion. Signed by the Mayor of Black River, Call Member of the Borough Council. Thank you so much, Rebecca Yerick, for your service. Thank you for your.
Everybody, jeez, eyes open. You look so good. Happy thoughts, Christmas. Thank you.
Again, I don't think that this is a goodbye, but we will see you in your next role and you will continue to be involved with Mechanicsburg and change this for the community. We look forward to all the contributions that you make to Mechanicsburg, the requirements of the Mechanicsburg community.
Nancy, we've known you for quite a few years now, and then I, I know you've been instrumental in really creating a bad news for all of us in that event with Big Tree, particularly in a time where we probably both thought there would never be a meeting of Big Tree again. So we really appreciate all the service you give to the community and, and really like happy for all of that you've done.
With that, Borough Council has the following resolution, twelve dash two thousand and twenty-three, and it states, whereas the Mechanicsburg Borough Council wishes to recognize the fact that Anthony Wurley was serving on the Shades division from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas Anthony Wurley was instrumental in serving on the Shades division as a member providing guidance with wisdom. And whereas Anthony Wurley, the president of the borough with dedication and integrity, acted always in the best interest of the citizens of the borough and the Council, always keeping the health and welfare of the borough free, despite his current, uh, or his current health. Now therefore, it is resolved by the Council and the officials of the borough and the Council and Pennsylvania. But we commend Anthony Wurley for his years of service to the Mechanicsburg community staff, always with due dedication and loyalty to the borough and contributing to making the borough of Mechanicsburg a good place to live. The pass exists of the seven thousand and twenty-three, assigned by Mayor Wurley, Call Member of the Council. Thank you. All of that.
It's festive, happy, loves you, you look great, I don't blink. All right.
We're going to continue now with the presentation on borough facilities and the potential purchase option as presented by Manager Thompson and Mr. Cassidy to speak to the process that we have gone through so far.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. What I'm going to talk through is a couple of slides that we're going to use as conversation slides over the next couple of meetings. And so as these, as questions come up, we'll answer them within the slides and present them at the next meeting. And we'll also post the slides to our website for folks to see. So if you could, go to the next slide, please. Um, the facility strategy overall for the borough is really always going to be the same. It's going to be to optimize our facilities, our real property portfolio. The main objective there is a thirty-year sustainable space for our borough services. That's borough staff, Police Department, and Public Works, wastewater management. As you know, the fire department's doing their own thing with the fire, the new fire station. That's keeping its own pace, but that's not discussed in this particular strategy. The second objective is something that kind of runs as a parallel process throughout all of the facilities and real property discussion, which is making sure that the borough properties and borough services are really in the optimal property pattern for the borough as far as commercial use goes and making sure that, for instance, we're not running borough services out of property that otherwise could be much more valuable as commercial use property. And so that's one of the themes that you'll see throughout this is making sure that the borough services are delivered out of places that make sense, not just from a delivery of service perspective, but also from an economic development perspective. Next slide, please. So when I came on board about a year ago, I started the process of assessing all the facilities in the borough and all the properties that the borough owns. And started obviously with the thirty-four, thirty-six West Allen because this is the one that has kind of the most history of repair activity plus assessments and analysis of structural integrity of the building and, and overall maintenance cost visibility. And so as you can see there, just a little bit of kind of context for the thirty, thirty-four, thirty-six West Allen for the folks in the room, that's the building that you're in right now. And, and for the folks online, it's, it's where the main municipal building is. And so this is an old building, much, 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 as most of you know, older than, than just our occupation of the building since two thousand and two. And really, we've put a lot of money into it just in the year that I've been here. We put a lot of money into the roof and into some plumbing issues and corrections. And then we've also had the structure assessed again where we have a failing support beam on one of the catwalks. So one away, West Allen, that's where our Highway and Public Works office is. That is simply, and, and C H, I'm not stepping on you when I say it, it's simply unsat for a place for our colleagues to work from. And so that's a place where it, it, it demands action kind of on a regular basis and it is on top of mind as far as, as targets to, to move to better facilities in the future. As you know, the wastewater treatment facility is out on Church Road. That is an a must-sit location because of the infrastructure that is there. Can't just pick up the wastewater facility and move it somewhere different. And so that's a location that our goal there is to improve the facilities on site there and then maximize the use of that land footprint. And so my assessment that, that I continue to, to bring to council and to everyone is that the Allen Street properties, both of them are beyond what I would consider to be reasonable, meaningful repair, and that overhaul costs for either facility would reasonably require a teardown and rebuild and, and, and costs could be reasonably equal to that of rebuilding a new facility. So if we could go to the next slide, that kind of, that kind of boils down to a two thousand and fifty vision. And this is where we go into strategy. This isn't plans that have been approved or plans that have been laid in, in, in edict ordinance or resolution. This is a strategy. The strategy basically says, hey, we have this, this opportunity to acquire two nineteen East Main Street. That's what you'll see tonight. That's up for vote as a purchase, to approve a purchase agreement. And the opportunity there is to move the municipal office and the police department to that building. And then there's the long-term strategy to consolidate the highway services over to the Church Road property. Again, that's a strategy. Before the opportunity at two nineteen East Main came up, the move of, of the highway services would have been my top priority because of the condition of that building. However, the, the opportunity at two nineteen East Main Street was brought to us and, and that's what we're going to be talking about tonight. So let's go to the next slide, please. This is about the economic development, that kind of goal, too. If you look at that little dashed box inside of our kind of borough outline, that little dashed box represents a property values that are on the rise, commercial use, where we want to see economic development on the commercial side grow. And as you know, both of the, of the Allen Street properties are, are, are on, in that box. And so what this initiative does is it moves those services out of that box and returns that property, almost two full acres of land, returns that property to commercial use. That's a step two, right? We're just talking about step point five right now, but that's way down the road. And then you get several revenue streams coming in that are not existed today. One benefit that I would, that I really want to touch on here is the property at two nineteen East Main Street is an appropriate commercial style office building that has rental income. And so as a matter of real property investment, it is a positive cash flow investment. Right now, the current borough office is a negative cash flow investment. It's, it doesn't generate revenue. It just costs money to maintain. And so at the end of this adventure, we will have ourselves a commercial property should the council vote to approve it. That does present a, a net revenue income. Okay. Next slide. So this is where I'm going to, I'm going to briefly describe this slide and then I'm definitely not going to ask Mr. Cassidy to try to read everything that's on that slide. But, but what this is, is a timeline that, that shows all of the decision points that council has, the council meeting dates, and those are in red, and then the, the supporting actions that have to be done in between everything. And this is kind of what we're working through right now. And the goal of this slide is to show the reader that where we're at in the process today, which is the twelve nineteen meeting, what the decision is that's on, on the council agenda today, where we've come in the past just three months, and then what we have left to do. And it's also meant to, to ensure to the reader that today is not the decision to buy the building. Today is not. As you can see, to the right of the twelve nineteen decision, there are still several very, very important process steps. There are mechanical inspections. There are, there are still some, some administrative items that need to be cleared up and you can see them in there. There's also some bond and financing discussions and deliberations that need to happen before that final decision just in the beginning of February. And so for context of the overall project, the, the bottom half of that slide kind of shows, hey, if we go through with this entire process, we're talking about a design and remodeling that would happen over the course of two thousand and twenty-four and then moving in, moving from the new facility, from this facility to the new in two thousand and twenty-five. And now, if I could, Mr. Cassidy, maybe talk a little bit about where we are from a legal perspective.
Sure. So a little bit of a background as well. So I, I'm sure some folks in the audience, audience might be thinking, why are we hearing about this now if, if in September, council was considering the possibility of acquisition of this property? The reason for that is that under the Sunshine Act, the acquisition of real estate is a legitimate basis for council to meet an executive session to acquire real estate. And the reason for that is that whenever a municipality is considering the acquisition of real estate, we, we don't want to, to, to advertise the fact that we're interested in the property and then find ourselves in a bidding war with other prospective buyers with the, with the property. So that enables council to discuss the possibility of acquisition of real estate in executive session, ultimately to keep the price as low as possible and avoid a, a bidding war if at all possible. So in this case, as Manager Thompson explained, it was back in September, the borough entered into a, a non-binding letter of intent with the current owner of the property who was actively considering the sale of the property at that, at that time. So we entered into the non-binding letter of intent in order to take the property off the market. That gave us then the opportunity over the last three months to work with, with the seller to do some preliminary due diligence, to gather information about the property, to do some assessments with respect to its viability as a, a commercial building that would be ideal for, for municipal use, but also continued use with commercial tenants. And then it also enabled us to work with our financial advisors to explore the possibility of, of how to go about financing this acquisition and looking at financing options and the debt service associated with that as it relates to the, the rental income on the backside of the deal from the commercial tenants to see how that all works out and bottom line, the impact that it has on the borough residents and the taxpayers of this borough with respect to the acquisition of a municipal building. So we find ourselves today at a, a decision point for council in terms of there being, we, we drafted an agreement of sale that's been approved by the seller. The agreement of sale is on the agenda tonight for council approval. So I'm not going to presuppose what council is going to do tonight, but assuming council does approve the agreement tonight, the agreement then gives us a sixty-day due diligence period during which we, we can continue with our due diligence. We can, within that sixty-day period, council can terminate the agreement for, with, for cause or without cause or for any reason and receive a refund on the deposit, the due diligence of deposit and then be done with it. So what that gives us then, it's an opportunity tonight to speak openly for the first time for the taxpayers and the residents to hear about this, number one. And it gives the community an opportunity to think about it. The idea, we'll have another meeting in January, that if you have comments, questions, concerns about the acquisition, it's an opportunity for members of the community to voice those concerns or ask those questions and to engage in that open process, if you will, between council and the community with respect to this possible acquisition. The decision point will come then in February, February, I believe, our, our, our final date by which we need to make a decision whether or not to move forward with this acquisition. So I believe that will give us three council meetings between now and that, that end of the due diligence period in which to engage in this community outreach process with respect to this acquisition. So I think that covers everything, everything, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone could have. Mr. Cassidy, one question, please. You said sixty days, but I just noticed on the timeline that we have a, a date of February sixth. Would you just reconcile those two timeframes, please? So I think that February sixth is the last council meeting at which council can take an affirmative vote to terminate the agreement. Otherwise, council would have to schedule a special meeting before the end of the sixty day due diligence period.
Do any other questions from Councilman? Hey, we will move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any items to add or remove from the consent agenda or regular agenda? There are none. Are there any amendments or changes to the proposed minutes? There are none. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Absoluted.
Vice President Anthony moves. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilwoman Agarson seconds. Any discussion? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Moving on to citizens comment. Mr. Trace.
Before you begin, I think Councilwoman Agarson wanted to recognize she really liked the trim.
For the record.
For the record.
I did it for my work, uh, office party. I'm actually wearing two hats tonight. First one is, is Ron Trace, three oh four North Arch Street. I'd like to shout out to Luke, to Luke over here. My normal pickup day for trash and recycling is on Fridays. For some reason, they did not pick up my recycling. They picked up the trash, they picked up everybody's recycling other than mine. Why? I don't know. My son put it out the night before and everything. And I was going to contact the office and I forgot to. Then Monday morning, I contacted the off, I actually emailed Luke about it. Within an hour, I had response back from him saying, put it, put it out, they'll pick it up first thing Tuesday morning. Lo and behold, I, I leave for work, it's real after seven in the morning, they were already, so somewhere between six thirty and seven o'clock, they were already out there and they picked up the recycling. So thank you very much for, for due diligence on that. The other thing is, I'm putting on my other hat as the president of the Mechanicsburg Volunteer Fire Department. We had, as I mentioned last time at the council meeting, we had Santa Claus at the firehouse on December ninth, on the ninth. Somebody was still being naughty who showed up, so they're not getting their Mercedes.
Wasn't me.
But there's a, but there's a lot, there's a lot of kids will probably be very happy this year. We had, we, I think there was over a hundred and seventy-five children who were there, plus their parents and guardians or whoever. So I'm going to say we probably were, probably close to three hundred people there for a couple hours. And then after that, after Santa took a little break, then we actually went out in the borough on the, on a piece of fire apparatus and various stops in the, in the borough. And I think it was an enjoyable time. I enjoyed myself there. I had to convince somebody that I wasn't Santa Claus. I said, because Santa Claus came from the North Pole, but she went, she was sure I was, I was Santa Claus. Not going to mention any names, but she stayed up front. Then I had the pleasure also, Sun, this past Sunday, we had a program through the, we had contacted the school district for this, a program called Operation Legacy, where we gathered a lot of gifts for a family that was in need in this borough right now. The mother is actually in the hospital. Actually, no, I guess now she's now in rehab. She was involved in an automobile accident and her, she lived there with a, I think it was a fifteen-year-old boy and I guess it would be her sister came up from Baltimore, is living there right now and helped take care of the boy and all that. Were we surprised though? I mean, there's probably, I don't know, fifteen to twenty members of the fire department there with all the apparatus, you know, showed up and everybody's wondering, why is the fire apparatus there? They were surprised. And it was really, it was really touching. They really appreciated, plus they got to meet my dog. I went and got it then because I walk by the, the house every day and their dog's raised a little, you know what, as, as we walk by and everything. So, but, I think it's just great how to end, end a year on a positive note in general, you know, and where people are in need of this borough, all they have to do is reach out and I'm sure somebody will help them one way or another. Thank you.
Mr. Trace, is there any other citizen? There are none. Moving on to Mayor's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. November twenty-fourth, Chamber of Commerce tree lighting at the square, Kirk flies music, Pop Chocolate, great time. November twenty-fifth, Downtown Small Business Saturday, popcorn up big hit. November twenty-eighth, visit from Mechanicsburg Museum. Wanted to know about growing up. November twenty-eighth, visit from Mechanicsburg Museum. Wanted to know about growing up in Mechanicsburg. December two, open the Union Church for Tres Music recital. Tenth, open the Union Church for Hoshi violin recital. End of report.
Mr. Mayor, moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Absoluted.
Vice President Anthony moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Aggerton seconds. Any discussion? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items on the consent agenda are approved. Regular agenda.
Mr. President, thank you. First item on the regular agenda, discussion and action to approve the purchase agreement for two nineteen East Main Street.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilwoman Aggerton makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Martin seconds. Any discussion? Well, thank the manager and Solicitor Cassidy for their presentation tonight and, uh, putting opportunity for the questions. Uh, we're excited to finally discuss and, uh, bring the address, uh, on the particular property into public consideration. And, um, over the next sixty days, we will have, uh, significant discussion and, and further presentation on the opportunity for council. So I think we're all eager for that. Is there any, any other comment or any other questions for the borough manager or for the solicitor? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, sir. The next action on the regular agenda, discussion and action to approve the police union agreement to buy back twenty twenty-three time off.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilwoman Aggerton makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Booker seconds. Any discussion or question?
This is the standard buyback that happens every year. That's part of like our agreement with the union.
It's a side agreement, but it is, it is, uh, has been, uh, the borough's practice to do previous years, but it's not in the current union agreement.
But it's a mitigated strategy to, like, long-term debt obligation.
Correct.
Any other questions? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. The next item on the regular agenda, discussion and action to adopt the twenty twenty-four budget.
Absoluted.
Vice President Anthony moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Beard seconds. That's a majority of the finance. Any discussion?
I do have one item, sir. Um, if, uh, it's appropriate and if council will allow it. Uh, we did get a cost estimate in for a repair of a piece of equipment that would be just a six thousand dollar add to a particular line. I don't want to come back two weeks from now for an off-budget request. Um, and so it is, uh, in the, um, transportation vehicle repairs for, for, uh, the highway department, um, an increase, uh, to that line item as appropriate based on the cost estimate, and that estimate is in your packets.
Modify my. I have modified myself.
Are there any questions?
Grateful for the work that they have done. You want to do the same thing, right? You guys, this year has been outstanding in comparison. Uh, we've taken large steps forward, so thank you very much for all the work that you've done to practice.
Thank you.
It's tremendous. Yeah. The budgeting process was, was wonderful work and the human staff was, was really effective. And the budget, I think, that was developed with the rest of the department heads reflects extremely the fiscal management of the people's money within maximum value for a dollar. It's just all around, all around a good budget. I'm excited for the future.
I am as well, and I want to draw particular attention to a few things, and that is one, that this budget, I encourage everyone to read the narrative around this budget, which changes the way, uh, Mechanicsburg considers the budget into separate enterprise funds. And it really educates not only council but the public as to what revenues fund which services within the borough, and it is very enlightening to learn what those items fund and what specifically is funded by, say, the amount of general tax dollars versus, um, the earned income tax and the amount of services that the borough provides for the revenue that it takes in based on those, uh, taxes. That being said, we are, there is no tax increase proposed for this year. There are no key increases proposed for this year. Also, we are engaging another round of infrastructure improvements throughout the borough, more stormwater upgrades throughout the borough. Additionally, the, uh, purchase of the new, um, municipal services center is, is envisioned within the twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, so we are, uh, I think, as Councilman Beard suggested and said, this is one of the fiscally responsible and forward-looking budgets that I think the borough has completed in a long time. And it's very exciting to see the trajectory of the borough doing more with less and more aggressively seeking, uh, grant funding, which is our tax dollars from other sources. But it's a, it's really exciting to see more of that come back here to the borough to be put to work, throughout the borough for a variety of different, um, initiatives, like the Trees for All program, like, um, the tax dollars, you know, our, our grant money coming back from the county that fund various programs here in the borough. It is, it is long overdue, I think, that we have sought to bring that, those resources back to the borough. So I'm, I'm excited for the twenty twenty-four budget, and I'm also excited, uh, to see what we can do next year. Did we have any other comments or?
One, one quick thing, so I paused it while you were speaking. The, the long-term and strategic thinking that kind of the, the planning, the budget for twenty twenty-four and hopefully beyond, it ensures that this borough will get into the situation that some others may find itself in. And to be recently minded about how devastating, uh, poor fiscal management can be in the community. Not too terribly far from here. We certainly feel badly for all the residents and even the public servants there. That's a terrible mess. This is, this is, there's no medicine to take here in Mechanicsburg other than to just trust those that have been voted in to do a reasonable job and the public servants in the office. And, uh, I think sometimes it's easy to overlook what might have happened had we gone down a different path or not faced, uh, difficult questions. Had looked at things that maybe at first doesn't, don't look terribly responsible, uh, or look expensive, sometimes those things are the least expensive things to do. So I just think, uh, it's a moment to be grateful for what Mechanicsburg has, especially seeing what can happen. And we hope that never follows us. Thank you.
Thank you. There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passing passes and the budget is approved.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the last item on the regular agenda is, uh, discussion and action to award IT services contract to Third Element Consulting for twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Booker makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilwoman Aggerton seconds. Any discussion?
I have a, a few points that I'd just like to review for the record, Mr. President. These points don't necessarily need immediate responses as the borough manager and the solicitor and I have had some discussion. And I know that we'll be moving forward in a positive way. But just to make these items kind of publicly known, data ownership is of course an important point. We need to ensure that data ownership is very clear in the written contract and that we not, and I should preface this, none of these should be taken as a handshake. These should be, these should be memorialized in the contract and writing. Data ownership, but in addition to that, data access. So that if data migration becomes necessary in the future, that the means of accessing that data not be built, uh, that be something that's included in the contract. Uh, in, in conjunction with that, uh, hardware that is involved in data integrity and data storage, the ownership of that hardware should be clearly stated in the contract, whether that belongs to the borough or to the company. And if it does belong to the company, some allowance for the borough to get the data off of that hardware prior to that hardware removal and recapture is important to consider. Uh, removal of the company's software from the borough's systems, networking as well as standalone systems needs to be comprehensive, uh, and complete within a certain period of time upon termination of the contract. There are situations where that software is not removed, and in a year, two years, we find out that we can't access a particular piece of hardware or software because that was not dealt with at the time of termination of the contract. Uh, password release, um, should be clearly specified, who those passwords under release due and, and when it should be upon demand. New hardware costs for acquisition should be addressed in the contract with reasonable or no margins attached to the acquisition of that hardware. And many companies are now requiring that that hardware be acquired through the company, uh, in order to be covered by the contract. Yet at the time that the contract is initiated, they'll accept any hardware that exists in the current ecosystem. So, uh, if we're locked into acquiring additional hardware in the future from that company, we need to make sure that we negotiated the pricing or used a formula ahead of that. And then the cost to add that hardware to the current contract. Uh, at times, there are attempts by companies to increase costs for additional add-ons more than the existing operation might indicate. Uh, in addition to that, the third-party costs, so we, we saw in your memo, it was extremely well done. Thank you, Mr. Manager. The third-party costs, though, are, are generally not included. We won't get into the details here, but for instance, virtual desktop, uh, three sixty-five, antivirus, network protection, cloud backup service, cloud backup data integrity and verification, cloud storage, uh, are just to name a few. And many times, the third-party services are in addition to the negotiated contract price and can often exceed the negotiated contract price for services. So I think it's important to be clear about what those costs are. And it's easy to say, as some of us would like to say, that the cost of the contract is a relatively low percentage of our gross revenue. However, when we double or possibly triple that cost, that starts to heat up, and it would just be nice for transparency, um, in those items. And then lastly, a, a question for the record. Uh, Mr. Manager, have we factored into the twenty twenty-four budget the proposed contract that we have before us, if you doubt? I shouldn't say contract, but the proposed details that we have before.
The answer to that is, is yes.
And have we included the additional third-party costs as well?
Yes.
And have we factored in any additional hardware or movement of hardware and software from this facility to a potential new facility?
No.
Understanding that would not take place until twenty twenty-five, fall twenty twenty-four?
Right.
So understanding too that this is a one-year contract, those would be costs in addition, and that would be part of the acquisition and movement of the offices should that take place. Is that correct?
Yes.
But it's part of making sure we covered that. And with that, I will really say thank you.
Thank you. Well, there are good points and good questions.
So, Mr. President, so a point of order with respect to the motion that's on the table. So it's a motion to award a, an IT services contract to Third Element based upon their, uh, proposal. I just want to make it clear that the, the motion would be to award a contract to, um, Third Element for IT services, subject to the borough and Third Element negotiating the terms of a contract which is acceptable to the borough.
And thank you so much. That's exactly why I wanted to raise these questions. And at the president's pleasure, he certainly could perhaps, um, form a small group that could review that contract along with the solicitor and the manager who are more than capable of just to ensure that any concerns we might have are followed by many people.
Sure. Let's do that. And, um, yeah, I think we, those are all very good points that we should, we should make sure are touched in the contract. Any other, any other questions or comments for?
All, all amended by the manager.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think the acts are not dead, right? Because they're just proposed into start a contract with.
It's just, um, the motion is just for, uh, to award the contract. It's not the actual, I guess it's not, it's not the actual, it's to.
When I.
Come to an agreement with Third Element on a contract.
So to be, uh, I would, I would phrase this as being to accept the proposals submitted by Third Element for IT services subject to the borough and Third Element, um, agreeing upon the terms of a contract.
Okay. That makes sense. I'm going to change the motion, if I may, before that, that question to council director. I don't believe that this contract needs to come back before the council, the way that the motion is currently made. So we would be, as council, we would be trusting that negotiation to our solicitor and book. We would not be seeing this again.
That's, I, I would not characterize it that way.
You would not?
I would, no.
Could you clarify?
So it, it would be, um, it would be, uh, tonight, council, uh, accepting or approving the proposal submitted by Third Element subject to the borough and Third Element, uh, agreeing upon the terms of a contract for IT services, which I would fully, um, expect to bring back to council for a final approval.
That's good. Thank you.
Doug, that was in my, in my mind, but my, my mind works differently. Um, that was, that was implied, but I'm glad we clarified.
Thank you. That was a very important, uh, presentation. Can you, would you amend the motion?
What did he say? I amend my motion.
You amend your amendment.
Yeah. And I, I also like to say that I do like to see that we're, uh, patronizing potentially, uh, in borough business.
Second.
Oh, me, yeah. And I amend my amendment, my amendment, my.
There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. What do you do? Borough manager's report.
Yes, sir. Uh, so my manager's report is provided for you in your packets, provided to the public. Um, however, this week, um, the borough manager's report only contains performance measures. Uh, and I'm working on a year-end review borough manager's report, uh, that'll be provided in January. So, uh, you, you're welcome to look at it, but it has no narrative content. It just has the performance measures. Uh, the next manager's report will be a little bit of a weekend read. That's all I have.
Finance Administration ordinance, Vice President.
So, uh, discussion on requested ordinance change regarding stray cats, Borough Manager?
Uh, yes, sir. This is a continuation of the discussion on, um, the cats running at large. Yes, sir. This is a continuation of the discussion on, um, the cats running at large ordinance, the trap neuter release, um, uh, program. And, um, trying to come to terms with language to put out into an advertised and adopted ordinance. What I've provided to you in your package is, um, some language that we've worked on from the borough staff and solicitor. And, and really what we're trying to get at this particular meeting is kind of, we just want to know, is this what we're looking for? Is this the intent that the committee is looking for so that we can then begin the formal adoption process? Not of adoption of cats, adoption of the ordinance. And so that's what's in your packets.
Y'all have had a chance to review that which was sent, comments, thoughts?
I think the first question I have is, this ordinance proposal identifies the cat as in violation and it doesn't fully address the owner. So, um, I, I don't know how that's enforceable other than we, we're rounding up these owned cats. So it's just a point of.
Uh, to, to be clear, if we have to enforce the ordinance, it will be against the owner and not the, the cat. We will not be taking any, any felines to the magistrate, magistrate, district judge, magistrate judge. But, um, if we need to clarify the language of the ordinance, we will, we will do so.
I don't mean to make light of it, but that, I just wanted to make sure as I read over it, um, it, it didn't identify the owner for that.
That, that's an excellent point and we will, we will clean that up.
So, um, question. Has been impounded as a community cat? Can we, can we play impounded to it? How, how is that word defined?
I'm gonna take a shot at this one. Um, to me, that means, um, that, that it is taken, it is entered into the TNR process. That is trapped and then entered into the TNR process and then released. Now it's a community cat, no longer a cat running at large.
So if it has a knocked ear, it's impounded? Perhaps.
It, it has been impounded and it's been through the TNR process. So it's been trapped, neutered and released back in the, into the community. So it's not someone's pet, it's just a cat running at large within the community.
Right, it is. I know I'm gonna regret this, but so if a cat is owned, it can't run at large or be upon the highway street, alley. Court, park or other public place, but upon any private property premises, other than those of the person who owns it. But. But the cats who are not owned can do all of those things so long as they're, they've gone through the TNRs process.
Is that, so that is correct. And, and so when, when I first saw this draft ordinance, I, I, being an owner of two cats, I can only imagine, um. How difficult this would be to enforce in terms of outdoor cats running at large. So the, the best way to look at this is that any cat, um, that's found running at large in a community. Is subject to capture, to trapping and being neutered and released. That would include cats that have a collar with an identification tag. Now, I would think as a practical matter, the first step in a cat running at large with an identification collar. If the cat was trapped, um, the cat would be returned to the owner with a warning given. That if it happens again, the, the owner will be, uh, subject to fines or penalties under the ordinance rather than putting the cat through the, the neuter process. But that is a possibility that I expect that to happen. This was going to be a very challenging ordinance to enforce. But what it does is it, I, I think it will incentivize the owners of cats who allow their cats to roam. Outdoors at large to at least make sure their cats are collared and taking appropriate steps to have them spayed or neutered.
So if, if we are in fact encouraging spay and neuter programs. Should we put additional language to indemnify those who participate in the TNR program? In the event that an owned cat is treated in this manner? And, and the reason I bring that up is, I think, somewhat clear. I mean, if somebody has a cat of particular value or they perceive a particular value and they had to spay or neuter. As you said, even with a collar or chip. Should we clarify, I mean, it makes the hunt, what's allowing one cat to run free more severe, the owner does not want to spay. Are we gonna give rise to actions in law, neighbor against neighbor on it?
Yes, perhaps. I, so. My, my question to council would be, how, how big of a problem is this, number one? Um, and as a practical matter, how, how? Many resources are you prepared to commit towards enforcing this ordinance? And we're, and speaking very generally, it, when it comes to local government, um, it, it's one thing, it's great to identify a problem and enact an ordinance to try to address the problem. But then the real question is, and the proof is in the pudding is, are you going to be able to enforce it? Are you able to administer that ordinance? Or is it just something that looks good on the books? I, I think there's a real challenge with respect to what's being proposed here. In terms of the application of this ordinance as it relates to cats that are owned. That cats that have a collar that are running at large. And it begs the question, do you really want to have, whether it's, it's the police department or code enforcement folks or the humane society representatives. Chasing down cats that are, that are owned by someone that have a collar. And, and enforcing ordinance against owners who have allowed their cats to run at large within the community. Versus, if, if, if the real issue here is, um, is, are cats that are feral cats? That have taken over and abandoned home or, or dealing with an issue like that. If, if that's the issue, my suggestion would be just focus on the feral cat issue and draft an ordinance that makes it clear that. Any owner of a cat who allows their cat to ru- roam at large in the community and without a collar identification tag. They run the risk of that cat being trapped and taken into the, um, the, the TNR program.
So I have a concern because this all started, like, I think this is a separate thing. This all started because of enforceability of a citizen taking a cat to a dump. And us not being able to enforce animal cruelty and abandoning those cats in the dump instead of doing the trap neuter spay program. So I don't know that we've addressed the animal cruelty part of it. And I would have to ask Chief if, if she thinks that this would be something that would address that particular issue because that's what I thought. This, like, it all started, I mean, this cat conversation is, is probably the most robust conversation I've ever been part of. But I, I think that we're missing the part about animal cruelty here.
Yeah, I can, I, I agree with, I agree with that too. I think that we sort of lost sight of where we started. And I don't, and I, and I, and I agree that I don't believe this would be a super enforceable ordinance. Because if my cat got out and it had a collar on and Chief brought it back to me and said, next time your cat gets out, you're gonna get fined, then I'm just gonna take the cat's collar off. Now nobody knows who it belongs to, right? And if it gets neutered, it gets neutered.
Right? And so my, my concern is, is that if I pick up your cats and I decide to put it in the dump and that's considered cruel.
Right.
But the police cannot enforce that, like, you know, I, I get the whole trap neuter spay program.
Yes.
Like, that's great, we have a program for it, we can do that.
Yes.
But we're still not addressing the citizen who thinks that it's appropriate to starve an animal to death in a dump.
Right.
I think, I think the other, I think the other aspect of this we have to be careful of is we were, I think we all received an email complaint. That was a complaint for.
Information.
Information, um, about this debate. And that is that we also have to be careful whenever we decide that there is some belief and some, some. Literature out there that discusses how cats can be an invasive species, so to speak. So I think we also have to be careful not to, um, perpetuate TNR so much that we, we increase the cat, feral cat population. And, uh, just from the perspective of this person who knows, uh, what she's saying in terms of, um, the debate. So just putting that out there, I think that we have to be mindful of that.
That goes back to the discussion as to whether euthanizing feral cats versus TNRing them reduces their population. And we've heard a lot of information. We've heard some information on both sides of that. And counsel in aggregate's point, the dumping issue is one issue, a jurisdictional issue, you're like issue, I think somewhere in there, somebody proposed. But then there was another part of that, which was that citizens were feeding the feral cats, which was part of that exact conversation with that particular resident and.
I'm not, I'm not necessarily reading anything as a, as a, yeah, email or what I'm saying, but more that we should encourage. Other cat owners to take hours off their backs and let them, yeah, freely because it's a free spay, neuter program. And they're out in the public.
Yeah, for the record, I don't own a cat, so I'm not gonna do that. Is that the only animal you don't know just about? Yes.
But the feeding of the cats issue came up. I don't think this really addresses. There was the question of if citizens are feeding feral cats, are they now in the care of that citizen? And does that citizen now have liability for that cat?
So I think that what we need to do is address those multiple issues before deciding what we want to do. Because I think having a trap neuter spay program is okay. Um, but I think that it doesn't address the multifaceted issues with the cats. And again, I would like to say that cats do cut down on the mouse population that we also heard from citizens a couple of weeks ago. So there is a little bit to be said that cats is nice.
Chief Myers, excuse me, Chief Myers, isn't there already something in the ordinance that says not to feed stray cats? Was that brought up?
Basically, what I heard earlier was if you eat the cat, um, and take care of it, it can be considered a threat.
Okay.
Um, that's, that's one of the little flaws in the ordinance, but I think there. The problem here is too bold, um, is, uh, with the spay, neuter, um, return. That those people have to keep those cats there by feeding them, so, so that they can eradicate the food on grab. So that's where the problem is. And then you dump, the second part.
The second issue. So I think we have to identify if we are holding people responsible for feeding cats if they're now owners of it. Because then I think there's an obligation to go to the owners about the cats if they want to have the cats participate in the program. But I, I, I think that we also need to go back and adjust the animal cruelty enforceable, enforceability of this ordinance.
And I don't want to see a lummy citizen who's feeding a cat be fined.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, if that's.
Because that's part of the program, right? If, if you're trapping a cat.
Or sheltering in any way temporarily.
Yeah, what other animals could be dead and what specifically is that?
I believe the, I believe the context on the feeding part was also, uh, the number of cats congregating to where the feeding was taken.
That's, well.
As a nuisance to the neighbor.
And I don't think it was just to keep the cat in town until they were trapped. I think the feeding is occurring even after this.
Which is a remainder of its life.
It's humane, because if you have cats.
Right, and then, and then some people are building shelters.
Yeah.
And I would encourage you to read the article that the residents sent us and is kind of the science-based policy for managing free-running cats. And I think that is some, some interesting, um, perspective.
And if, if I may also, it, with respect to the animal cruelty, uh, issue, I, I'll, I'll double check this, but I, I believe under Title eighteen, the Pennsylvania Crimes Code. Animal cruelty is, is a, is a named criminal offense. So I, there are laws on the books that will, will address the issue of animal cruelty. Uh, and that's, that's a, that, that's a defined term. So the, the issue with this cat being abandoned at the dump, I don't know if that would rise to the level of animal cruelty. But I don't, assuming that it is a defined crime within the Pennsylvania Crimes Code. I don't believe that a, a, a municipality has the ability to, um, further define that. To expand the application of what's considered animal cruelty, uh, in, in that context.
So maybe we should review the animal cruelty statute, come back to this and, um, look at the language of it. But I just think there's a lot of questions. What's some really good intention?
I, I can provide information on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other thoughts? So it sounds to me like we have unowned cats, owned cats, animal cruelty and feeding. And you're gonna work on kind of restructuring what we have with Title all of that.
I, I will see what I can come up with to address those issues.
Thank you. It was a good conversation.
Thank you.
And just, we did put money in the budget for that.
We did. I believe that's all that.
Public Works on Safety Council member.
All right, um, so, uh, we're gonna go through our agenda or our reports rather here. Um, I'm gonna start with the San Diego Superior Department Reports, Superintendent Uy. Uh, do you have any updates or anything, um, that you'd like to highlight from your report?
Nothing from the report. I was told this afternoon that the, uh, platform we should be.
Was that Grant Truth?
Um, and then it, you said that, um, there's gonna be a plant, there's like a potential leak in the water system and it was supposed to be scheduled only eighteen. Is there any update on that?
Uh, I think, first of all, in terms of, we have an area we suspect to be, there's. Multiple those women, uh, closing the valve for that particular section of the, uh, facility.
Thank you. Um, we'll move down, um, any, yes, sorry. Um, Public Works Department Reports, uh, Public Works Director Layer, anything you'd like to highlight from your report?
No, nothing at all, I think.
Keep on moving. Um, the Public Safety Department Reports, uh, Lee, Lee Chief Myers, anything you'd like to highlight from your reports?
Well, not in my report, but Lieutenant Curtis made it back safely from the FBI. Let's hear it on Friday about two. We're just seeing around.
Mark, you've got, who you'd like to highlight?
Uh, nothing in your report from the printed report. We'll, uh, announce the, uh, reorganization of the fire chief position right now. Or myself as municipal fire chief and Chris Pitzer, congrats to him. That is the new chief of the Kansas City Public Works. That's all I have.
All right, uh, and then EFC Wardle, anything you'd like to highlight from your report?
Oh, and updates, I actually spoke to Sir Cass who did for the meeting and, uh, everything that's been finalized, the special needs registry. So that information will, I will work with Michael and have that on the website during the new year. I'll make sure something gets in the newsletter and we will work to ensure that that service is available to the public. Uh, what will happen there is people will have the opportunity to fill out a paper form. The paper form will be played in my mailbox and I will enter all of them.
Uh, thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, that's the end of the public course.
Can you just walk through the outrage council?
Thank you. I have no report regarding the library, which was Anthony's school board. Uh school board had two meetings, they, back to back, they had a reorg meeting that lasted seven minutes uh where John Rupp uh took the presidency again uh by unanimous vote. Um they also did in their follow-up meeting, uh which was also a very short meeting, a, they created something called the Wall of Legacy, which is honoring anyone who has twenty years plus in the school district working for the kids. Um so they encourage people to go see the wall and if you know of anybody who isn't on the wall, they would like to make sure that everybody who's been working for twenty years or more has worked, they're back to nineteen eighty-one, they said. Uh for twenty years or more, they like to make sure they get them up on the board. Um Mr. Sankford, who is a uh director, became the very first chair of the Career Technical Institute from Mechanicsburg. That, that board is uh of all people, board of directors, folks from many school districts around the area, as you know. And uh it's the first time in fifty-six years that Mechanicsburg has been the chair, so he was very excited about that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we'll discuss the Mechanicsburg app, who, who will be? Um so I did submit the info paper through the packets. Um a program we currently use called Jot Form, um if you ever submitted a missed trash or a yard waste pickup on the website, that's the program that we utilize for those. Um I discovered there's also a way to integrate those forms into a phone application. Um so it allows you to kind of design it the way you want it, um add external links for um the website, the Facebook, Instagram. There's even a little button that prompts you to call. And it's all in one spot and you can download it on your phone. It's not um like an App Store app per se, it's more of a mirrored browser. Um so it kind of just captures the information and keeps it on your phone with an app icon. But it, it'll allow for um easier access to some of those forums if you're on the go. You don't have to access to a computer for the website um to submit missed trash, um codes complaints. I'm using it for the food waste program. Um and the nice thing is that anyone that uses the app, you'll be able to track that information to see what forms you use the most. Is it being used a lot at all? And ultimately it's all free because you already paid for the program um that we use for the points.
Will the Snow Angel program be included?
Absolutely.
I did um look at, at the app um through the uh, the link that you sent us and I thought it was, I thought it was great. It was easy to use, it was large enough for me to see and that's saying something, so yeah, I, I did, I did like it.
So when we, I applaud this effort by the way, great way to reach out to the community. When we had an app for the downtown Mechanicsburg partnership, some of the things that came up were a lot of people don't like to put apps on their phone because it takes up space. What you're doing is not that, right? This is kind of a link, it doesn't really take space on the phone, it's just a link to a, a creation behind our website, if I understand.
Correct, so it wouldn't be like a downloaded app. Um it's really just capturing um the browser onto your phone.
Right.
So when you click on it, it's still technically opening like a web link.
Okay.
Not um a separate app.
It's app-wise, but
Correct.
Not on the birdies and
It's not taking any space on your phone, so it's, that's, that's the thing, I think you might want to consider advertising when you go out with the information is this is not an app that's gonna take up space on your phone. Uh because it's that, I got that a lot, you're trying to have people share. The other thing that I love about it is that you can update it almost whenever you feel like it and make it better based on what's happening live.
I like that it says no cost for yard sales.
Yeah. He'd have found a grand if it was a cost.
Question, I feel like, because I'm kind of new to this, to be honest, I'm way coming to do my best. So I just started using apps on my phone for various things and I, I love it, right? I don't know what, so long. Is this, is this the half step to an app or is this emerging technology that's going to be?
Um I would say this is a half step um because it's not, I don't think it would provide everything that a traditional app would. Um it's really just taking the links to those forms and putting them all in one spot.
Right.
Um and then you can add additional links, like I said, the website, social medias. And kind of just put it all in one spot, but the nice thing is that we can track the usage of it. If the future idea is to do something more um extensive, we have the information that tells us how it gets used.
So are you using, you're using it to gather information in order to develop an app that would have high usage value?
Correct.
Yeah. Very, very interesting, I think it's great. I, I, I like that, I think an app's probably coming for it sooner than later with usage.
So I had a lot of help from Michaela as well with developing all the um pieces of how to do it and getting it all together.
Will it have the, I'm sorry, will, will it have the functionality to allow for notifications?
I don't believe so, um because it's not an app, it's more just like a web link.
Yeah, we, so we have a couple of different apps that do notifications. Um we haven't yet explored a non-emergency notifications tool. We are flooded daily by vendors who would love us to use their app. There are no less than a thousand commercial products that do that for local governments.
Those that were free.
None of them are free, um except for the one that comes with our financial management service, and that's one that we're exploring right now.
I do like this functionality, I think that's a good idea. At the same time, I would suggest that if we, one, we consider other future initiatives, maybe other, other avenues. We take a look at revise, where companies that does our website, and a bit of integration and cross-functionality with our website and the, the applications that we already use and maybe some, maybe expanding some of the resources that we have to do revise. But other than that, this is a great, it's a great step and to um publicize.
So uh one more question then. How long do, you're gonna go through kind of a big campaign to get people to put this on their phone, right?
Yeah, I work with Michaela, um she'll probably be doing a lot of the um advertising of the app to getting people to download it.
So that's gonna be a lot of work, time, effort. How long do you think it's gonna be in your vision before we have a real app or something that's to revise or something? Something that will be the next step where we'll be asking people again, okay, take this off, put this on?
Um I think it would depend on how much um information we can gather um as people start to put it on their phones. And that'll depend on how quickly people sign up for it.
Put it on their phone, yeah.
Yeah.
Couple of years maybe.
Can you tell, do you have any metrics to tell them that people have looked to their phone and down?
Um we haven't publicized it yet, so
But like, would you have a, would you be able to have a metric to say that so many people download this to your phone to utilize the?
I don't know about down, like getting it on their phone, um but it'll tell us like fifty people utilized the yard waste request through that.
Through that.
Yeah, because you're not downloading the app, you're linking to it, so it's a little bit different, like it's not
There is, there is however, part of the um survey for the conference, a plan will include a technology adoption engagement. Um we still do lack kind of a good measurement for what that technology adoption level is in the borough. On a willingness to use and willingness to act. Um I think a lot of that depends on really do we think we have a target audience that will use it in, in a meaningful way? And being able to
As long as you're, as long as you're utilizing a jot form, this makes sense. Because once you start using other services, it becomes less, it's the cost one of them, whatever, it doesn't pay.
Part of it's the value of it, right? So I mean, it's, it's just the download of building, it's minimally useful. But if it's, you can ask updated on things in the borough in real time. I, I have to say, I'm late coming to the party, but I'd like to see a full-blown app.
Yeah.
We're gonna do it and, so what do we have to offer on that app? So I
I think this is a good bridge to get there, because it definitely is user-friendly and I think, you know, I think that all the times that I don't want to call the office and ask things, but I can just put it in my phone, that's definitely easy, easier. But I think that once we start getting it, having an app is a definitely a good thing.
Maybe, maybe something you keep in mind, and I'm not this person, but a lot of people are very sensitive about their personal information being tracked. Saying we're collecting data, collecting information, maybe we need to think carefully how we phrase that.
Yeah.
It's all really just looking at the utilization of the tool.
Yeah, in the aggregate, not in the individual.
Yeah.
Also, last, maybe last question. If it's, what, what I think it is, it should be able to be put on my computer as well.
Yeah, because you'll be able to link anywhere, right?
Yeah.
So it's, it's not like you're downloading Facebook, that's the easiest app, but it, you're linking to that jot form, which you can do from anywhere.
Which is easier to use than our website.
And then also on, on this, maybe there is a possibility to put in updating when the app is available. I don't know if you can do that through different platforms, but if you click the update, it took you to your App Store or it took you to
Yeah, because you have the website link on that app, so
And you can link to virtually anything um with the, yeah.
But you're likely to have to go to the App Store.
Well, eventually you'll have to go to that.
You're like, we were talking about converting, like even a download to things, so I wonder if there could be an update there if that's something.
Yeah.
Sure, that's, but it's probably like way down the road.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a great conversation.
Yeah.
I know.
We have to think as fast as he does, and that's the challenge. Just a general question about information. When someone calls after hours, they can leave a message, do we encourage them to visit the website uh now to, to take care of anything they may be calling about? Have we done anything like that yet?
Or do you get my personal cell phone number?
Yeah, I have my personal cell phone number. It's available online. No, uh we, our answering machine, our answering messaging service currently doesn't say please visit our website, I mean, maybe we should add that.
I, I, I think that
Yeah, I, I, I do think it's important that, yes, we do that, um but I also think that we really do have a very low technology adoption rate. As is demonstrated, I mean, currently in the borough, we get tons of questions all the time about things that are available on our website and we refer to them to our website and we are regularly, regularly informed that they are not interested in using the website.
I don't lose the personal touch, I get that, but I also want to make sure, finding that balance of communicating well and
Gotta keep trying, gotta keep trying.
Could we, could we put a link to paying the sewer bill?
On here?
Yeah, you can.
I mean, that's what surprises me the most of all the things and all the services is that our adoption rate for paying bill online is so, so low compared to this
Yeah.
That's right.
Doesn't be attached for anything.
Well, no, that's not my So I called Verizon today and I was talking to them and they said, well, if you pay the bill through the app or through the website, there's no fee. But if you, if you pay it to a person, it's a ten-dollar charge. And honestly, that's, well, it works in, in mind for the future to move people forward.
What I've understood also is that there's a possibility that the borough can pay that, that, that service fee at the borough can pay that to make it easier for people to pay. So that's also
Wait, what?
That we, that the borough would pay the fee better than the customer. I mean, it's just, it's taking money, it's taking money from one pocket and putting it in another, it's actually, you know. I think ultimately we do want more people to pay with bill online, especially with how, maybe we're getting into a different discussion now, but especially with how the United Postal Service is going with the delivery rate and how they deliver the mail to people. So I think that making it easier for people, making the access to that link easier for people and knowledge of it is a good thing, so that's a digression from this point, but essentially just
Generally.
Generally, the link would be a good idea.
Great job with our not-app loop.
Yes.
Your not-app.
Any other discussion on this point?
No, simply no.
Good. That includes my section, thank you.
Community and Economic Development Council member.
Thank you, lovely board, by the way, this is
Nothing.
Downtown Borough Services Manager, is this the last time in this call?
Yes, with this, with this employer.
Well then, we shall put a spotlight on you and all be very, very quiet and learn to work.
Mechanicsburg Borough featured in the PSAB magazine, which is a small, yeah, um program. You can pass that around, take a look at it, I've already read it, I love a Q and A part, but I don't need it back. It's a big night for back, I want to thank you for your resolution, that was so nice and so Mechanicsburg Borough-like of you. I really appreciate that, you have, you have no idea what that uh means to me, it's been a pleasure working with you. The thing I want to mention is going back to Frank the Burger Place. When I started with the authority in two thousand and seven, the very first tour of candidate properties that I did was that November or December, about sixteen years ago. And it was for a Harrisburg-based development company that was looking for office space in a downtown setting. And we looked at two properties, the hospital, the hospital, and Frank the Burger Place. And they passed on both of those, obviously. But uh in the years that um that followed, showed that property, had a couple of people, there are a couple of different organizations that were interested in it. It was never quite right. And then I started working more closely with the Capellos on, first, the condemned property next to the tavern and getting that underway. And then the gardens that followed after the property was demolished and given to the Museum Association. And then the easement for the tavern patch, the land that the tavern sits on, that is on the Capello property. So after four or five years of trying to find the, all of the original investors who had to sign off on that easement, we had it's not called settlement, we had the signature, the signing for the easement on May thirty-first, the last day of National Historic Preservation Month, which I thought was just not, was more than a coincidence. And afterward, we've become pretty good friends and we're talking and she mentioned, she lives in Camp Hill, she has a daughter in New Hampshire, a son in Boston. She spends a great deal of time in those areas and they own a number of properties. She said, you know, I think it's about time I would be interested in selling Frank the Burger Place. They've never been on the market, even though we talked with people about it, showed it and so forth. And I ran like an Olympian to contact President Miller and Manager Thompson to say that she was interested. And I was aware that the borough had been looking at some things because when Tim Layman and I were working together on his move for Agway, I knew that that property was available, the property next door was available, and there was some interest in the borough in those. So um I don't think it's just a coincidence that tonight, sixteen years later, good things are happening with that and it's moving along and, you know, wonderful things to say about the work they've done with you. Mrs. Capello will be here in January to tidy up a couple of other projects we're working on. Um it's a big night, tomorrow's my birthday and I couldn't have asked for a better present than seeing that project move along. Other projects coming in twenty twenty-four, the picture at the top of the page is a, a building that kind of looks like forty-one West Main. Sebastian Triscari and I have talked about a project to uplight that building, that's where Kanagawa is. And we will do that in twenty twenty-four with a street view and about-face grant. The pictures at the bottom are the photo frames, I'm calling them, that are along North Railroad Avenue across from the gingerbread man in the building we just painted. They're boarded up windows, and we're gonna put photos from old, old railroad photos um in there. We have the permission of the property owner, I'll be working on funding for that project. The laundromat is for sale on West Main, if you're interested in that. In relation to railroad flats and the restaurant and brewery we've been talking about for a few months, that project has been suspended. The interest from the brewery has been suspended, we have some details to work out with The interest from the brewery has been suspended, we have some details to work out with, um, other, another first floor tenant and some other things. So we will return to that at the appropriate time. In the meantime, Lounge six eleven, that's the cigar lounge that will open in that unit in railroad flats that's closest to the Gingerbread Man. The benches that were at the Ames Community Garden, uh, have made their way to the borough. And they'll be put in either Fink and Binder Park or in the coming Arboretum. So that was, um, that property is for sale, of course, and, uh, I happened to be at a museum association meeting when I learned that they had two and there are three left. So I thought, give the borough a call and that all worked out, um, quite well. Thirty-three and thirty-five West Main Street, we have interests in those two units, two different businesses that would occupy those. And the last point undermined, general business update, um, before I get to the addendums that weren't in your report, is our homeowner repair program. So the property, the home that's closest to the Little Pocket Park at the corner of Simpson and York, has a new roof, a lot of interior repairs that you can't see, but this is one of the programs that the redevelopment authority offers to owner occupied, uh, persons that meet income guidelines. Additions to my report, hot sauce, hot, Revolutionary Hot Sauce Eatery and Brew Pub is now indeed a brew pub. They have their brew and their sales of beer and wine, Pennsylvania beer and wines, um, in hand. He's working on a kegerator, it's gonna take a couple of months to get that up and running, but in the meantime, you can get troves and some other beers there as well. That's what I have. Anything for me in my last report for the authorities?
A big thank you. Big thank you.
Yes.
Oh, you're quite welcome.
No, I wanna talk a restaurant.
Oh, okay. All right, okay, right on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, planning commission, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything to add to our discussion?
Oh, sir.
Thank you. Our lead is on report, Dr. Liger.
Um, as you saw today, we were able to approve a demolition of the building next to Y at the well. It'll be very exciting to see that come down, and we just continue doing good work and, and working with community members.
Great. Downtown McHenry Partnership?
So, yeah, we had our restructuring, so Gillian Yale Morrison will be the new president. Um, we think Daniel Lupia as our outgoing president did a lot of good stuff. And as I continue to report, it's amazing how many new members are coming into Downtown McHenry Partnership and we look forward to it. We also will be having on January tenth, um, a preview of, um, Legacy, Renaissance, sorry, Renaissance and Mechanicsburg downtown. So I look forward to seeing that and welcoming, welcoming the community members into that.
Does that, Mr. Yale, thank you.
Property Parks and Recreation Council.
I do not have anything for the rec board, um, Shade Tree and EAC, help me, Booker, do you have?
Uh, no reports for this one.
All right, and then we have one discussion item on the agenda, and that is on correspondence from the Shade Tree Commission regarding the trees in Center Square and on the drafting of a letter to Renaissance Mechanicsburg on behalf of council on the matter. Who's leading that discussion?
I, I can't, um, so as you guys are well aware, we've received some, um, correspondence, uh, in the previous meeting, um, from the Shade Tree Commission, um, about their, um, concern, um, over the potential loss of two beautiful trees that provide, um, stormwater mitigation, protect the wildlife, um, capture carbon, pollutants in the air, et cetera. So, uh, I was just hoping to see if, um, we had some sort of feeling as a council, uh, as to, um, our desire to communicate, uh, and support the Shade Tree's, uh, requests relative to, um, trying to retain the trees in that, um, Center Square project. And I know Dr. Greigster too, so maybe Dr. Greig can speak on kind of like why they were omitted from the, the raw project and stuff like that, so, um, it's possible.
Well, and I would also like to state that, um, January tenth, that meeting will be open to the public to also get additional feedback. I think that's important to be able to discuss that too.
I think it's important to mention also that, um, in the correspondence from the Shade Tree Commission, they've provided some particular avenues. The Renaissance Mechanicsburg, uh, committee besides, um, that it is not feasible to maintain the trees in that particular location, uh, they provided some other avenues for, uh, the project to donate back to the Shade Tree Commission and also a way, I think, um, perhaps there is some, some way to incorporate additional trees into the design that may, um, please the Shade Tree Commission rather than the direct monetary contribution to, uh, to the commission. So I think there's a lot of options and opportunities here, it's not just, uh, one option or another. But I think, um, I think we have to respect also the process that we've, uh, so it has yet to go through in terms of their, those, whether they're land development or where they are capturing public interest.
Yeah, so I think that, um, January tenth will be a great opportunity for people to be able to get feedback, cause this is just the vision. Um, nothing has been approved or taken to council yet for, um, that. So I really encourage, you know, as many people to get out there and to provide feedback, because it is an opportunity to beautify and greenify downtown McHenry. So that would be my input as to, you know, you know, a letter of supporting and looking at that, but also encouraging people to come down to, to the meeting.
My, I mean, my reaction on behalf of council right now isn't in favor of one avenue or another, but just that the two organizations work together on the tree agreement.
I agree.
I agree. I think although growth trees are valuable in many ways, it can be difficult to handle it in the development. But our downtown looks so beautiful. I remember a younger person, uh, clearly about that. Calling downtown and loving the tree line streets and looking at the streets, I mean, those trees have been cleared. It was always, it was always, they were always clear, is what I heard, uh, because of sidewalk, for that, for that, because, 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 you know.
Well, are they random basic trees? That one's supposed to be there. I mean, there's, there's a multitude of reasons that trees. And, but I think to Kyle's point, having the Shade Tree Commission talk about what trees are appropriate if, because my concern always is, is that when you start digging in the ground, you cut a root, half the tree dies, before you know it, all the tree dies. Um, but I think those two organizations should get together and really talk about it, because green space is important, keeps our streets cooler. I love it, like going down Marble Street is one of the most beautiful experiences that we can have with those tree lines. Um, I think trees are important, green space is important.
We like to talk to each other and hopefully work better.
So would encourage, um, for those two lovely groups sitting there to exchange information and start attending each other's meetings. And maybe form a, a subcommittee, um, to be able to talk about those things.
How was the January camp meeting with the public, because how did the public know that?
So there is invitations and this posted on social media.
We've, we've posted as well from the borough, social media to, to get more attention.
You'll be on our half app too.
Uh, we've posted, we've posted comments on that.
Oh, sorry.
Was there any other action that Council of the?
I think it was mostly just discussion to see kinda what, um, again, I just wanna get something on there for you to talk about a little further, uh, see what we could do as far as like.
Do you think that discussion and communication is, if you want, put that in?
Um, I think I'd like to see the results of the, the listening sessions and stuff and see if there's anything that changes based off of the soliciting community feedback and then kinda get from there.
Okay.
Is it, is it possible for this woman, the committee manager, to put up a sign, uh, at the square, uh, advertising that meeting for the public decision?
A sign?
I know, I know, that's why I said it's impermissible.
My heart skipped a beat.
Where the council has a will, I will find a way. Uh, yeah, we can do that.
I mean, people walking past there might be able to.
Absolutely.
My only concern is occupancy, what is that?
Hundred and thirty, I doubt we're gonna hear it.
All right, that's a challenge, it's public, who's watching?
And I believe I have nothing further, Mr. President.
Personnel Committee, Council.
Nothing to report.
To report. Citizens comment, anything further from citizens is done.
Mercy gentlemen, we're O nine East Marble, it is a beautiful street. Um, just a couple of comments, uh, pets. Um, in the last ten years of me trapping, it is a, I can think of one pet that I have trapped. But, um, if you come into Nobody's Cats or York SPCA with a pet that has a collar on or a very white, clean cat, um, or a very friendly cat, they'll scan for a chip. Um, if they feel like it's someone taking advantage of the low cost spay neuter, they will turn them away. But I, I hear you, um, I don't think it's going to be that big of a concern regarding owners. So there are some situations, um, I will claim ownership of my cats that live in my backyard. Um, they eat only at my house, however, um, so that would be easy for you to say I'm the owner and I could not argue that. However, the colony that is here behind the borough building, I am aware of at least four separate houses that are feeding and providing, and or providing shelter. So in that situation, who is the owner? Um, whoever's putting out the best food, I, you know, I, I don't know, so. So I think that's, that's tricky, you're gonna have a hard time with that. Um, regarding the comment that, um, TNR perpetuates the stray cat problem, um, so, um, I'll offer again, a female cat goes into heat when she's four months old, um, she can have up to three litters of up to eight kittens per year. So TNR definitely reduces the cat population. Um, I was corrected by the resident because he was watching the live stream when I spoke last time. When I said I had trapped twenty-six cats back here, he said it was thirty-six, don't you remember? It's like, I don't. He's currently caring for or aware of eleven or twelve. Um, his neighbor removed four or six to the dump, so we are looking at a fifty percent reduction. And again, um, I asked him, well, how many litters do you think you would have had by now? And he's like, oh, dozens. So he's not had any additional, um, cats. Another neighbor has, but they know my number, um, you know, and then I go, go and get them, or they step up and they do it themselves, which is the ultimate goal. So regarding euthanasia, I don't think that it's legal. If you're thinking that you can, um, take them to Humane Society or York SPCA and they would be euthanized because they're not adoptable, um, those locations will not take stray cats. So if you come in with a feral, they're gonna turn you away, um, and I would caution, um, that no community is going to support euthanasia, so no, no, no community would support that. Um, I think that's it, so I just wanted to provide those comments and thank you so much for including the vouchers again, um, next year. I made an accounting mistake and had to pay for six of them myself for this year, um, which is fine, but we ended up doing, um, uh, forty, forty-six, um, this year in addition to the, I think I said fifty-six that I did October, November, December. So I appreciate the support, the continued conversation and the, uh, the vouchers for this upcoming year, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stone, thank you for, for your continued advocacy and, and input, it is valuable to us.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other citizens comment? Mr. Stone?
Yeah, this two thing, Mark Stone for, right, North Velvet Street, uh, is there a chance of getting the, uh, meeting agenda on, on Fridays instead or Monday afternoons? A lot of, a lot of residents like to see it over the weekend and see if they wanna attend or not. I noticed the last couple had not been put on since, until Monday. The other thing is, uh, thanks, man, uh, Borough Manager, for all the information on the building down at, uh, Main Street. Um, maybe a good thing to put on the website and even on the sewer bill about open meetings for these, for the residents to come see, cause a lot of people do not get the closed circuit TV, they don't watch it, but they do, some people do get on the website and there is some people read the back of the sewer bills. So there's two informations right there to get this information out, cause it's very important, cause these people will all be paying this bill in the future. They wanna know where this money's going to, how this money's gonna be spent, where the money's coming from and all this other information. So that just, there's two tools right there for you guys to get the information out to the public. The more people speak, the more you're gonna have more information back for you guys to be able to work with and to see, uh, questions and, uh, questions from the residents and answers, be, be able to answer the questions, because if you don't answer the questions, you know what's gonna happen. They're gonna be coming to you with tooth and nail and fangs and all that out waiting to claw somebody, so.
Sounds like a cat.
No, it's gonna be a werewolf problem. Thank you.
Any other citizens comment? There none, any other business?
I wanna make a correction, I've been corrected by the, the Museum Association, it's not Frank Inberger, it's Frank E. Berger. So let's pass that down, I'd be very guilty of that, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and we'll see you at the event shop, thank you.
Um, I just want to, I don't know if it was the brainchild of Luke or what, but the Snow Angel Program, I think is amazing. Um, it was even, uh, shared, you know, with the Friends of Jillsburg who were, and the comment was, look what Mechanicsburg is doing, why isn't Jillsburg doing this?
Okay, we stole it from Pittsburgh.
That's far enough away.
However, one of our residents, um, did send it to us as a recommendation and, so, yeah.
Well, I think it's fabulous, and if anybody doesn't know about it, um, you can sign up if you need assistance or if you need, if you know someone needs assistance. Clearing snow this summer, this, it's not, this winter, you can sign up for the Snow Angel Program on the website and the half app.
So can, can people sign up to be, to serve?
To serve, yes.
Yeah, that'll be launched tomorrow.
Yes, super awesome.
You can borrow my snow block.
I think that might, they said it's not gonna sound, don't worry.
Do we, do we know how many, do we know how many have engaged so far in the program?
No, I, I don't, sorry. Not me.
It did receive a lot of attention, it's a wonderful program, thank you for doing, John, Jim?
Uh, just a couple of things, first, I just wanna say thank you again to Rebecca for your service. It would be impossible to encapsulate everything, all of the, the ripples that are occurring because of the work that you've done over the last three years. Thank you for that. I also wanna wish you a happy retirement and a happy birthday, congratulations in advance. Uh, and I wanna wish, I also may have another brewery, you might be interested in that space if you want. You got three days left or whatever it is?
I need time to see things done.
Okay, cool, very good. And I wanna wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and see you at the restaurant.
I have nothing.
Um, again, thank you very much to Nancy really for all the work she's done with Shade Tree Commission over the last couple of years, various years. Uh, like I said, it was, for a while there, I was not sure if the Shade Tree Commission would ever meet again, because of the lack of members. Um, so she's been, uh, a consistent force in there for years, I appreciate her, uh, and Merry Christmas as well. I have all, send this to Merry Christmas. I, we have information on people who sign up to receive help from Snow Angels, all those people should receive a special net and special needs registry form. Uh, because there are people that we probably need to assist in case of an emergency in the borough. Uh, and then just, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and, uh, I wish you good health for everyone in twenty twenty four.
Merry Christmas.
I only want to thank council for a great year. It was an excellent year for the borough and all of the accomplishments we had this year as a council. I want to thank Manager Thompson again, you know, for your first full year here. And graduations on the anniversary again, and we look forward to another year and also to the entire borough staff for the year of work completed and for all of the accomplishments so far this year, there have been many, so we are very thankful. accomplishments so far this year, there have been many, so we are very thankful for that. With that, I wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and look forward to seeing everyone in the new year. Well done.